Looks like we have a quorum here, so we're gonna go ahead and and get started. Good evening. Welcome to tonight to tonight's meeting of the City of Tucson Planning Commission. My name is Lexi Wellitt, and I am the Chair of the Commission. The responsibilities of this body are to advise the Mayor and Council and Planning and Development Services Department on the adoption of long-range plans, policies, specific plans, and regulations that affect land use and development. Will staff please call the roll?
Thank you. Yes, is Commissioner Cassidy present?
Present.
Chair Wellitt.
Present.
Commissioner Zegir. Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Young. Vice Chair Ortiz Pino.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
I'm here.
Commissioner Rache. Commissioner McCansky.
Here.
Commissioner Kenny. Commissioner Lampeau.
Here.
Let the record reflect that a quorum is present.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Shroob. We're gonna go ahead and call item number two, which is the approval of the legal action report from June 5th, 2024. The Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the legal action report.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none and seeing no hands go up on Zoom, all those in favor of approving the legal action report for June 5th, 2024, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay? Hearing no nays, motion passes. So that brings us to item number three, the Broadmore Broadway Village Neighborhood Plan Update. Would staff please provide their presentation for item three?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Rebecca Rup, and I'm going to give the staff report tonight. Okay, can I? Bear with us. Did he go back to? Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna provide an overview tonight of the process and the content of the Broadmore Broadway Village Neighborhood Plan Update. As you remember, and I did go through a similar presentation at the study session, following an assessment of the original neighborhood plan, the Neighborhood Association formed a Plan Update Committee in 2018. And that committee then did further assessment and public engagement and determined that the update would focus on celebrating the original goals of the original plan and what had been achieved, and identify new goals and objectives to address current areas of concern. Committee reached out to PDSD throughout this process to discuss their progress, ask questions, and share draft materials for review and comment. In February 2024, the completed draft plan update was presented at a neighborhood meeting for a vote by members to determine whether the plan update was ready to submit for formal city review. The majority of Neighborhood Association members voted that the plan update was ready. So the first step in that formal review was a neighborhood meeting, which was held. Mayor and Council initiated the update of the Broadmore Broadway Village Neighborhood Plan on October 18th, 2022 at the request of the Neighborhood Association. The reasons again that the neighborhood wanted to do this update was first to recognize and celebrate the goals that have been achieved, and there were many of those, and to acknowledge and address current issues and community-wide goals. Just to go quickly through some of the goals that were met. You have the Arroyo Chico Erosion Control Area, 90s entrance trees, the development of Malvern Plaza, establishment of the treat walkway, Manchester Water Harvesting Traffic Circle, and the historic designation of the Broadmore Historic District, which was listed on the National Register in 2021. After almost a decade of work by this neighborhood, the Eastbourne Memorial, and if you're not familiar with that, it's metal flowers that are dedicated to neighbors who have passed. It's in the median at Manchester and Eastbourne. And then finally, more tree planting, which can't have too many trees. The key concerns identified, so the, you know, they achieve the goals, what goals were achieved, but then they also look through the public engagement process at what neighbors felt were the real concerns that should be addressed in this update. And those were identified as a quality of life, sense of place, urban forest and appearance, safety, emergencies, environmental resilience, traffic and transportation, and land use. With a focus on maintaining the R1 or R2 areas and the 25-foot heights that come with those those zones. The background on the original plan, so Mayor and Council adopted the Broadmore Broadway Village Plan in 1988, so it's 36 years old at this point. The plan was amended once on February 4th in 2015. The land use policy direction for the Broadmore Broadway Village Neighborhood is provided by Plan Tucson, the city's general plan, and the Arroyo Chico Area Plan. And what's proposed in this update is consistent with those two plans. The Plan Update Organization, there were three key chapters, a chapter on the history, very interesting, a chapter on that original plan and the outcomes, those goals achieved. And then finally, and the part that we're particularly interested in tonight, is the the goals, objectives, and actions that were identified to be considered going forward. So not surprisingly, the goals, objectives, and actions focus on areas that were identified through the identification of the concerns. So these mirror the concerns that I previously went through. And we're gonna focus on the land use and development focus area because that's the section of the neighborhood plan that's most often consulted by PDSD and considered by the Planning Commission. The updated Neighborhood Land Use and Developments section, the plan's Neighborhood Land Use and Developments section, includes two goals as follows. Work with the city and developers to ensure that any new development inside or adjacent to the neighborhood does not unreasonably and negatively impact existing residences. And that goal is followed by nine objectives and one action. And balance neighborhood and community-wide interests for future development within and adjacent to the neighborhood. That goal is followed by two objectives and two actions. The section also includes two maps, a current zoning map and a future land use concept map. The latter is consulted by PDSD when they get requests for rezonings, variances, special exceptions. And along with the map, of course, they look at all the complementary policies. So the current zoning map is put here next to the future land use concept map. And you can see that still the largest portion of the neighborhood is focused on on low-density residential. Along with the future land use map are land use designation definitions. And what these do is to take those land use designations that are in the future land use map and to talk about them in terms of the zones that people may be more familiar with. So those are useful to take a look at, plus the definition of the Sunshine Mile Urban Overlay District, which is along, obviously, Broadway in this neighborhood. And then I think it's important to look at the map that was in the 1988 plan, which was called the Recommended Land Use Map, and and set it next to the 2024 Future Land Use Concept Map. Again, you'll see many similarities. And finally, the Planning Commission on June 5th met to in a study session. Staff presented its report and recommendation that the Planning Commission set the updated plan for a public hearing on July 17th today. Commissioner Lampeau made two suggested revisions to the updated plan as follows. Both have been made. First was to reference the Pima County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Plan in the section of the updated plan on safety and managing emergencies, which is on page 23. And second was to include more specific more specificity about the purpose and types of traffic calming measures, which was done in Goal E1 on page 26. Additionally, we took this opportunity to add a table showing the current zoning dimensional standards on page 36. It follows the current zoning and future land use maps. It's often helpful for people to be able, if they see an R1 designation or a C1 designation, to be able to look at a quick map to understand some of the key dimensional standards such as height. So our recommendation is that the Planning Commission forward the proposed update to the Broadmore Broadway Village Neighborhood Plan to the Mayor and Council with a recommendation to approve the update. This recommendation is based on the findings below. The proposed update is consistent with policy discussion in both Plan Tucson and the Arroyo Chico Area Plan. It allows for consistency with current city initiatives, projects, and land use tools. And it helps provide more clarity in land use decisions when dealing with rezoning, special exception, and variance cases. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rup, for your thorough presentation there. Would any members of the Commission like to ask any questions of staff? Hearing none. With the applicant or the neighbor?
Really quick, I just have a quick question for staff. So I, and this is Commissioner Lampeau, by the way, I'm virtual tonight. But I was looking through the city's repository of neighborhood plans, and I keep seeing plans that were done in the 70s and 80s. So my question really is just, is there a mechanism by which these plans are could be regularly updated? I mean, a lot of these went out with Disco. They've been around for a long time. And I know Sam Hughes updated theirs, Broad Broadmore Broadway, you know, as we're seeing now. Other than that, I'm not really finding too many that have been updated recently.
Thank you, Commissioner Lampeau, Chair Wellitt. There was actually this this update to the Broadmore Broadway Neighborhood Plan and the Sam Hughes update came out of an initiative that was sponsored by Tucson Residents for Responsive Government about six years ago, where they actually held a series of workshops to support neighborhoods across the city in evaluating their plans, revisiting their neighborhood plans, and kind of assessing, do these match our current goals and policies as a neighborhood? And several neighborhoods from that analysis decided that they did want to update their plans. What was interesting was actually a lot of neighborhoods reviewed their plans pretty thoroughly and decided they did match their current goals around land use and development and chose not to make updates to their neighborhood plans. So Sam Hughes, as you mentioned, is one that did make updates, Broadmore Broadway. The Grant Alvernon area neighborhoods are also working on a significant update to their area plan. That includes seven neighborhoods, I believe, in that area plan. And so basically, the city's role in this is to support those efforts, but they really are neighborhood-driven efforts to make updates to their neighborhood plans.
Thanks.
We do have two members from the Neighborhood Association representing as applicants who would like to say a few words. We have James Angel, the President of the Broadmore Broadway Village Neighborhood Association, and Richard Rowati, one of the five members of the Neighborhood Association Committee that oversaw the preparation of the plan. And they're gonna provide you a bit more information on the the process. If you want to come forward, start with Mr. Angel.
Real quick, I did want to note that Commissioner Young has joined the meeting virtually.
Very good. Thank you. Gentlemen, go right ahead.
We know this one is working. And this one is working.
You guys got the hot seat now, huh?
Okay, so I didn't have a lot prepared. I just wanted to thank the Commission for considering the proposed update. Our Neighborhood Plan Committee put years of effort into engaging with neighbors in order to craft a plan that is supported by a majority of of neighbors, incorporating feedback to early drafts, conducting surveys. So yeah, I think they've put something together that's that's really good. I just wanted to say, I think it was mentioned there, but we had a general meeting this February. It was attended by 49 residents. And the vote to approve advancing the plan into the city review process was 39 to 10 in favor. The plan has the support of the board, and given the, it also has support of the neighborhood. I think it's appropriate to recommend its adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you wouldn't mind stating your name for the record, please.
Certainly. My name is Richard Rowati. I live on Arroyo Chico in the Broadmore neighborhood. I'm a member of the Broadmore Broadway Village Neighborhood Plan Committee. I remember back in 2018 when another member of the committee, David Holder, asked me to go to Pima West, Pima Downtown for a meeting. All the neighborhoods were there. I recognized Miramani, Sam Hughes, Arroyo Chico, every, just about every neighborhood, West University, every neighborhood you could think of was there at that meeting, and everyone was so excited to be working on updating their neighborhood plans. And so it was an exciting time, and that's that's when things got started in 2018, six years ago now. I'm I'm here to speak today as a member of the committee because the our committee chair, Barbara Becker, who was here at the last meeting, unfortunately had an illness in her family and can't attend. So in 2018, the board realizing that, you know, we had a 30-year-old neighborhood plan at that point, assigned a committee of neighbors to develop a new neighborhood plan. We met with planners from the Planning and Development Services Department and our city council member, and we began seeking input from our neighbors. Beginning with the BBVNA Fall 2018 General Meeting, we asked neighbors to identify key issues and concerns to be addressed in the updated plan. Based on this input, we developed and sent out a survey. There was a high response rate from residents. And from that survey, we were able to establish six primary focus areas that have been discussed. And in meetings open to neighborhood participation, the committee met to numerous times to develop, to create goals, objectives, and actions areas under each area of concern. These proposed goals and objectives were posted on the neighborhood website, included in the neighborhood newsletter, shared by our listserv, and Nextdoor, and discussed at the general meetings that we hold twice every year. Neighbors were also asked to share additional feedback by email, surveys, and general meetings. When COVID occurred, we, our progress slowed a little bit, hence the six-year delay. But we continued to work with the neighborhood via Zoom, and when it became safe to do so, we held an in-person meeting at Malvern Plaza. With all this input, we came to realize we were writing a plan regarding the initiatives that we as neighbors could do for each other. We view our neighborhood as a community, and we've been helping each other since the inception of our neighborhood back in 1948 and all through our history as a neighborhood, that together we can face issues such as fire danger and droughts and heat. And that's why we want it passed, because we have committees waiting to go into action. After all these years of input, we submitted the final draft to the city in 2023. And then in January this year, the city approved the final draft. And so in February 2024, the neighborhood met in a meeting that was held both in person and on in Zoom to obtain the maximum participation possible. And the neighborhood voted overwhelmingly to adopt the new plan. So here we are. We are now asking you, Planning Commission members, to please approve our new neighborhood, Broadmore Neighborhood Plan so that we as a neighborhood can move forward in achieving our goals. Thank you so much for your help in this matter.
Thank you both for your presentation. Does the Commission have any additional questions before we open the public hearing? I can't. It looks like Commissioner McCansy, you have a question? Go ahead. The floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. Two quick questions. You noted, the last speaker noted, that you had a high response rate to your survey, your neighborhood survey. I was just curious what that response rate was. And two, you mentioned that 39 out of 49 at the neighborhood meeting had approved the plan. Excuse me, the plan that you're representing, which is another very high commendable number. But I was just curious if there was like one or two sort of, you know, themes that the, those that did not approve the plan had listed or commented on. Thank you.
Hi, hello, hello, yeah, it's working, yay. This is Richard Rowati again. So as to the the survey and the response rate, gonna have to say that was back in 2019, so I call that BC or before COVID. So I can't really give you specific numbers on that response rate at this point. As to the concerns of of those who were not in favor, I think we've got two representatives of folks who are not in favor, who would like to speak tonight. They could probably speak to that question better than James or I could.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing to members of the public who would like to speak about this item. In general, there is a three to five-minute time limit per speaker, and which may be extended i- if we need to. Members of the Commission may ask questions of the speakers, but we do ask that each speaker be timely as we want to make sure that all those who are here this evening, who would like to participate, have an opportunity to speak. I know there are a couple folks here in the audience that would speak, as well as we have a few cards here. So I'm gonna start with the cards, and then if you two are are in the listing there, if not, we'll turn it over to you, okay? Thank you for being here. So the first speaker on the card, and I apologize if I mispronounce your name, but it looks like Richard Roady, Rowati? You just spoke. Perfect. Bingo. James Angel also just spoke, two off the list. So it looks like we have a third up is Wayne Anderson.
Hello, is this working? I guess it is. First of all, I want to thank the board, the Broadway Broadway Village Board, for putting so much effort into this plan. My primary objection is the process and how it was handled. I know there was a lot of work done, and I do appreciate that. My name is Wayne Anderson. I live at 2826 East Arroyo Chico. I live in the Broadmore Broadway Village neighborhood. The following are my opinions. On February 21st, 2024, there was a special Broadmore Broadway Village Neighborhood Meeting at the city-owned meeting room in Reed Park. This was for discussion and a vote on the new neighborhood plan, which was uploaded with little fanfare on the BBVNA website early January 2024. There's been a lot of talk about how much interaction the board has had with neighbors, but the real meat of the plan was the land use part, which wasn't released until weeks before our our vote. This was the first time the new land use part of the plan authored by the authored by the City of Tucson was revealed in any way by the board to the neighborhood. The vote was an up or down vote regarding the new neighborhood plan. It was claimed by the current BBVNA board that the meeting was to be under Robert's Rules of Order. Because of this claim, it was announced on February 18th, just a few days before the meeting, that that there would be, that there would be no proxies allowed in the vote. I was active in collecting proxy votes, and by our calculations, if the proxy votes were counted, the the vote would have failed. The new plan would have failed. This last-minute move by the board disenfranchised a significant number of neighbors who were unable to attend the meeting and were not offered absentee ballots by the board instead of a proxy. And instead, signed proxy ballots as there's and instead, these people signed proxy ballots in lieu of an absentee ballot. I maintain that the new plan would have been defeated if the proxy votes were honored. During the board's presentation, the audience discussed the details of the new plan. There was a motion from the floor to close the discussion. It was seconded. The President of the Board, who was running the meeting, called for a vote on the motion without discussion. As I see the the Chair of this meeting called for discussion on the minutes, there was no discussion on stopping the discussion. That, in my belief, is contrary to Robert's Rules of Order. They cut off the discussion prior to when we got to the land use plan part of the new neighborhood plan. So no one at the meeting had a chance really to discuss what was in the new zoning, the new proposals from the city. None of that was available for discussion. Also, one part of the discussion some people had was whether there was a threat to the historic designation of the neighborhood. No one had a chance to even talk about that. There was a vote. The discussion was closed. And and then there was another call for a vote on the plan where it just squeaked by with what, 40 people voting? This is a neighborhood of maybe, I don't know, 1,500 people. 40 people determining land use of our neighborhood? City representatives have attended our meetings and must be aware of the irregular nature of how our meetings are run. No one really knows Robert's Rules of Order, and yet they use Robert's Rules of Order to deny the use of proxies. Steve Kay mentioned earlier, our former councilman, that we, of course, expect you to follow normal democratic procedures and not exclude people from participating based on in any illegal criteria. Well, the city enforced Steve's statement. The new neighborhood plan should be Well, the city enforced Steve's statement, the new neighborhood plan should be denied until the process is fair to all. Proxy votes are honored, and a full discussion is allowed in the neighborhood regarding the city-driven land use changes in and around the Broadmoor neighborhood. I appreciate my, my opportunity to address you all, thank you. Oh, and I yield my time, if there is any. Oh, I have documents too, so maybe they could be passed out.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Anderson, for your participation this night.
Thank you.
This evening, excuse me. You had six seconds left, so we can...
Well, I'll use it then.
While Mr. Anderson is getting those papers together, the next speaker we have on the list is John McNally.
Yes, before I speak, could I do it from the table here? Could I speak from the table?
Is he allowed to speak from the table?
If they were allowed, if they were allowed. Yeah, but I've got some documents here I need to pass out. Okay. Also, I wanted to verify there was a statement made by Rebecca Rupp that I wanted to have somebody verify what I'm about to show. No, these are the documents, no, before it starts here. And could you verify, sir, if you please, the date on here? And their following city management action. All right, yes, I will now. Ms. Glinsky, I'm, you're here, correct? Excuse me, Ms. Glinsky, is that you? Okay. I'm a little surprised, I'm a little surprised at some of the statements that Rebecca just made, considering the documentation that has been forwarded to you.
Excuse me to interrupt, Mr. McNally, can you please just state your name for the record into the microphone?
John McNally, twenty-eight, twenty-five East Stratford Drive. Okay. I'm a little surprised at some of the statements Rebecca made, considering the documents that you have been made privy to. And so now I'm gonna start off with my presentation. February two thousand fifteen, there was a mayor and council meeting, minutes is what is included in document number one, and it was concerning the pad nineteen for the Broadway Village Plaza. Points to consider was that this rezoning was being done for the, what was the American Apartments, which was an O-three, and they wanted to convert it to a parking lot. The agreement included that there would be historical land designation for the Broadway Village Plaza. This is not shown, and the picture is taken down, in the new BBVNA plan, where the mixed use is, but you have two HLC-one buildings in that plaza. The next one was Mayor Rothschild explained that the agreement made that evening was an agreement that must be abided by. Then there was a discussion about a traffic site analysis was done for the parking lot for about forty-four spaces, they did a traffic site analysis. Why has no traffic analysis been presented for this new zoning? Because when I go into document number two, you're gonna find how many miles we're talking about of potential cars, okay? Then Councilmember Kozajic asked Mr. Duarte, and I believe is a COT rep, employee, to address concerns about the domino effect, further encroachment of the neighborhood plan, or neighborhood, if this plan, pad nineteen, was passed, okay? Then Mr. Kozajic, or Councilmember Kozajic asked the Broadway Village legal representative if the pad allowed for construction of two more structures. Commitment was made not to build those structures as a condition for rezoning, that what was the apartments, which were torn down from an O-three, to the parking lot. The legal counsel for Broadway Village agreed to that, okay? The legal rep also asked if the new rewording that Mr. Rankin was proposing at that meeting was contingent on the rezoning. And Councilmember Kozajic said yes, and he confirmed that statement. So the amendment made by Mr. Rankin to the, what was gonna be the pad nineteen, was read by Mr. Rankin, and Mr. Rothschild asked, and if, when you listen to that recording, he was quite firm. He asked the legal representative if he accepted these conditions on behalf of his client. The representative agreed to that. Then Councilmember Cunningham expressed concern that some details had not been brought forward sooner. Where have we heard that, just a few minutes ago? Finally, Councilmember Ulrich noted, the problem was that those underlying zoning was not consistent with the verbiage of the neighborhood plan, converting an apartment to a parking lot. Now we're doing something much more massive. And it's saying that there was a less, there was less desirable options. And then finally, by the way, just as a note, the Planning Commission voted against the adoption of that pad, but it was passed anyway by a vote of seven to zero. Okay, the second document is a total acreage calculation for that mixed zone, the, the purple, okay? That is twenty-one acres. If you assume as they updated, because based, I think, on my comments at last month, that's forty-four units per acre. Well, if you assume the average mid-sized car, take the lower end of fourteen feet in length, you're looking at two and a half miles of parking space. Where's that gonna go? And by the way, how come there's traffic site analysis hasn't been done for that? Now, am I saying that the whole thing is gonna convert overnight to forty-four units up and down? No. But the point is, you're laying out, here is potential for what could happen. Even if you cut that in half, it's one and a quarter miles, where are they gonna park? All right, document number three, the Tucson Unified Development Code, section four-point-seven-point-two-three talks about the mixed-use zone, and it states, mixed-use zone is not intended for rezoning. But what are we seeing here?
And your, your time is up.
Okay.
I appreciate you coming out here and speaking here. Does staff want to address some things on that there, or?
Oh, the, what I'd asked the person here, and I don't know if you're counting my time, what I showed him in the photo, can I just describe that?
Very briefly, please.
Okay. What it is, it was taken from a March two thousand, let me get it up here, I'm sorry. A March eighteen, two thousand twenty-three meeting at Ward Six, which Rebecca attended. It was a meeting for the T R R G, and they had on the posters in the background, and it says, city manager action, ask T R R G to help update plans, assign PD, okay. So the point I made last month, there was a meeting by city council to say, we want new plans. So this whole thing that the city, that this is an organic grassroots effort, it was initiated by the city. There's a reason that, and it has to do with the pad, and by the way, the pad is superior, if I'm correct, to any planning, any zoning through subsequent zoning by the city to the U D C, in general, not all cases, the pad is superior. So what I'm trying to point, and we have more documentation too, to show that the city was very heavy-handed in what they wanted in this plan. And that was presented, it's, what you have here is the Dropbox, and again, I am surprised based on what I've submitted to Ms. Glinsky, that this is even allowing to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Ms. Manning, would you like to say anything?
Sure, thank you, Chair Wellitt. I just wanna clarify a couple things. You mentioned that a pad does supersede the neighborhood plan, and that's absolutely correct. So just to clarify, a neighborhood plan provides land use policy, it does not change any of the existing zoning in the neighborhood, which will remain in effect, the R-one zoning, the other zones, the Sunshine Mile, those all are unchanged by this neighborhood plan. I believe Rebecca shared a slide that demonstrated, she shared a couple maps, one showed existing zoning versus the proposed land use, future land use map, and you can see they're very similar. Basically, the, the future land use map reflects existing zoning in the neighborhood, more or less, that was based on what we heard as neighborhood goals. And then the other map that Rebecca showed was the previous map in the, the neighborhood plan versus the future land use map that is in the proposal you have before you today. The changes there are a few changes to basically reflect the existing zoning, to be a more accurate representation of what is allowed today. So you do see that change on Tucson Boulevard, where the existing R-two zoning is reflected in the map as more of a medium-density residential area. So again, there's no zoning changes that would take effect with this land use plan. It would be a policy document that would provide a foundation for any future land use, zoning changes that could be requested, and it's really an update to reflect what has been adopted in terms of the Sunshine Mile, and really reflect the neighborhood goals that have been accomplished. That's from our discussions with the neighborhood, that was really their primary goal in this plan update, was to demonstrate some of the work the neighborhood has done in past decades, and set new goals around a lot of the elements that you see in terms of open space and tree canopy and things like that. Those are really primary goals, along with the update to the land use map. And then I did just also wanna mention, so that the, the commission is aware that the U D C does not actually require any neighborhood meeting for a neighborhood-wide plan update such as this, or a neighborhood association vote. These are different, this kind of plan update is different in that it is driven by a neighborhood association, as I mentioned, but the U D C requirements are for a Planning Commission public hearing and mayor and council public hearing. So really, this is, this is the intention of this public hearing, is to provide an opportunity for feedback. While there is not a requirement for a neighborhood meeting, there were many meetings held by the neighborhood group, as you heard, and also the city sponsored a neighborhood meeting that was mailed out to the entire neighborhood. And that, that meeting was really, it's a chance for inputs and feedback on the plan, but there's, there was no vote at that neighborhood meeting. There, there was a vote at the neighborhood association meeting prior to that, and that is completely in the purview of the neighborhood association, and is really outside of the plan amendment process laid out in the U D C. So the city doesn't oversee any of the meeting procedures for neighborhood associations, that's, that's really left to those associations.
Great, thank, thank you for that response, Ms. Manning. The next speaker we have is Susan Husband. Susan Husband, come on down.
Can you hear me? Yeah, okay, hi. So my name is Susan Husband, I live at twenty-six, eighteen East Malvern, and I've lived in the Broadmoor Broadway Village neighborhood for about thirty-five years. And during the time that I've lived there, I have been active in the neighborhood association in a variety of projects, and I've been on the board, been involved in a lot of things. I think something that I really value about our neighborhood and our neighborhood association is that it's a volunteer group formed of, of people who live in the neighborhood and who have stepped forward and want to participate and do what they can to make our neighborhood a nice place to live. And I think it is a very nice place to live, I'm happy to be there. So we're not in HOA, and I feel that that's an important aspect of our neighborhood. So as you heard, the original plan was done in nineteen eighty-eight, and then in twenty-eighteen, we were asked if we would like to update it, which we, we did. And as Richard mentioned earlier, input was gathered through a variety of ways, through our neighborhood newsletters, through our meetings, through our listserv, through our website. And I know in being involved in these things, that you just try to get word out to everybody, and then when all is said and done, people come out of the woodwork saying, how come nobody told me? But we've really made an effort to get as much input as we could. And you've, then we had the neighborhood working groups, and you've heard about those, health and safety, traffic, land use, environmental resilience is one, and that's one that I was involved with, because that's something that I have an interest in. And so I did attend, I was part of that working group, and we worked on that. Then eventually, the plan was presented to the neighborhood, and I believe that the draft of the plan was on the website for, during this time. I think for at least a year, it was up there, and people were encouraged to look at it and give their input. So we did have a meeting, feedback was given, revisions were made, we went back and added and changed some things. And so now we're really ready to move forward with the new plan. I think it addresses issues that were not around in, in nineteen, yeah, nineteen eighty-eight. Things like the internet, and having Zoom meetings, and also new projects, because we've completed, as you saw, a lot of the projects from the other plan. So I'm just here to, to ask that you please approve our neighborhood plan, and let us get going on what's next for our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Husband. Are there any other members of the audience or online that wishes to speak regarding this item? Now is your chance. Hearing no one, nope, there's a hand. Commissioner McCantsy, can we hold off for that, or do you have a question of the last speaker?
I, I just have a general question about, you know, what, if there is a formal approval process for these neighborhood plans that the city encourages the neighborhoods to use, is there a formal sort of standard process that is used, or they each come up with their own process for approval?
Yeah, Commissioner McCantsy, so this is actually the formal process that we're currently in. Generally, what happens is mayor and council will initiate those plan updates, and tell the neighborhood association or whatever to go forward in developing that plan, and then the formal process really begins with the Planning Commission, little Planning Commission study session, Planning Commission public hearing, they will make a recommendation, or you will make a recommendation, and then that recommendation will go to mayor and council, they will have another public hearing with mayor and council, at which they would make a decision on the adoption of that plan.
Yeah, I understand that part, but is there a formal, a standard process by which the neighborhood itself, you know, approves the plan that the neighborhood has put together? Like, I just heard that thirty-nine out of forty-nine, either in the neighborhood association or in the neighborhood, approved this plan. Is, was that based on a formal approve or standard approval process that the neighborhoods use to approve their plans before they are presented to us?
Sorry, Commissioner McCantsy, there is not a formal process that the city asks the neighborhoods to do. In my experience, most neighborhoods working on plans do take them to their neighborhood association membership and ask for some kind of vote, and that's, that's normally what happens. Not a requirement on our part, but I think it's something we would take into consideration, we would normally ask, you know, have you, have you shared this with the membership, and, and what has the membership, how had they responded?
Okay, well, it just seems like a standard, you know, a standardized approval process for the neighborhoods to approve their plans before they are presented to us would be an appropriate thing to institute. Thank you, I'm done with that.
Thanks, Commissioner McCantsy. At this time, I'm not seeing anyone else wanting to speak, so the chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Are there any seconds?
Second.
We got two of those. All those in favor for recommending this item to mayor and council, say aye.
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 Sorry, sorry, back it up, back it up, sorry, back it up, out of order there, out of order. At this time, I'd like to open it up to general discussion.
Thank you. I was looking at the previous land use map for the neighborhood and it says that Broadway corridors, high density residential office commercial. And I think that's pretty much what the mixed use. Like find it. Just says in the description of mixed use, it just kind of adds the zones that you find mixed use. So I don't see that there's anything that's really changed with the map, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Martin, are there any other commissioners wishing to discuss anything on this?
Yeah, so one thing, could you speak directly in the microphone? It's actually really hard to hear you, I have my volume turned all the way up. So just a procedural thing, so does a neighborhood association fall under the definition of a public body according to Arizona state statutes?
No.
So that, that answers that question perfectly. And I think it, it seems like there was an attempt to be inclusive in the planning process. It would have been nice to see the survey, actually both of the surveys. Just to understand what the questions were being asked, you know, i- is it, it obviously probably wasn't a statistically valid survey, but understanding how it was designed, you know, maybe including a public outreach plan, a stakeholder plan. Things of that sort of nature would have helped. But the other, the other thing that I have is, is more for staff. And we have members of the public who are presenting items in person. We can't see them, the commissioners that are online can't see what's being presented. So it's hard to really wrap our heads around what it is that's being presented if we don't see it. So, you know, other municipalities require that members of the public who are submitting comments, those be included in our agenda packets. So just, you know, for the future, if a member of the public wants to speak, maybe it would, it would help if we recommended or encouraged electronic files, PDFs, so that we could pull them up on the screen as they're speaking, but that's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Lampeau, are there any other points of discussion to be made by the commission?
I just have one comment. Commissioner Lampeau, if you want to go forward first, you can, you.
Well, just to kind of expand on the reason why I asked if, if a neighborhood association falls under the definition of public body. You know, open meetings law requires a lot of things, of public bodies, meeting minutes be made available. And if a neighborhood association doesn't fall under that definition, then I can see how that would be problematic, I could see how people would feel as though they're being nudged out, but the truth is that the state doesn't require it. So procedural due process, notifying neighbors, it kind of goes out the window when it comes to neighborhood association meetings. Including ones at which land use plans might be, you know, given initial approvals.
Commissioner Ortiz-Pino?
I would just like to point out that neighborhood associations are run by neighbors, citizens, people who are not professional planners, who have a genuine interest in their neighborhoods and are doing this out of, you know, their volunteered time after working hours when they have families and so on and so forth. You know, it's very commendable and I respect all of the input that you guys have put forth and the energy that you've put into this plan. You know, as a, as a planner, I understand doing everything you can to reach out and not being able to reach everybody. So I just wanted to say thank you for the work you've done for your community and you can't make everyone happy all the time.
Thank you, well said on, on that regard there, I too share similar sentiment as it relates to working through these in a, in a grassroots effort. And, and I too agree that there is not a whole lot of changes occurring other than to, to bring the neighborhood to where the neighborhood feels it needs to be at this point. In time, I recognize processes are processes and, and they may be hard, but eh, this is the time to, to voice your concerns as well. And, and hear that, allow us to hear that. So if there is no other discussion from the commission, hearing none, seeing no other hands come up, with the completion of this discussion, I'm open for a motion to vote on this item here.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the Broadmore Broadway Village neighborhood plan to mayor and council.
Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor of recommending this item to mayor and council, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Hearing no nays, motion, motion passes with a favorable recommendation of the Broadway, Broadmore Broadway Village neighborhood plan update from the planning commission and that will be forwarded on to mayor and council. So at this time in the meeting, I have to recuse myself, so I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Ortiz-Pino to run this next item and I will be back shortly after that, so thank you all and we'll see you in a minute.
All right, thank you Chair Wellitt. I'd like to take a moment to call the next item, item four, Houghton East Neighborhood Plan Amendment, public hearing. Would staff please provide their presentation for item number four?
Good evening commissioners, my name is John Beal with the Planning Development Services, entitlement section. And tonight we have the public hearing and update on the Houghton East Neighborhood Plan. So just as a reminder, this is a concurrent plan amendment action and that the applicant held a combined neighborhood meeting for both the proposed amendment and the rezoning. So that notice is mailed out a little bit more ahead of time, at least thirty days prior to the meeting. And then as part of this process, the planning commission holds a study session and a planning commission public hearing on the item to look at the proposed land use. The materials that are provided are a little more detailed than some because it's going through with the concurrent, the rezoning for the site plan information. And then the zoning examiner, public hearing for the rezoning then will be held after the, this public hearing, which is generally scheduled for August eighth. And then they both will line up together, go into mayor and council for approval. Again, the Houghton East Neighborhood Plan is actually encompasses an area between Speedway and Twenty-second and Houghton and Mill Palmamay with Broadway running right through the middle. And you can see the subject property is over on the southeast corner of Houghton and Broadway. There have been some previous plan amendment actions and rezonings, there was a, a plan amendment in January nineteen ninety for the northwest corner, I mean northeast corner of Broadway and Houghton. And it was mainly to increase the non-residential height, because the height at the time was limited to twenty feet in the plan. And just for this specific site, it increased it for a range between twenty-eight and thirty-five feet. Was taking in some of the topography that was along in that area. There was a proposed rezoning, but it, it never took place, it expired. The next plan amendment regarding this height of restriction of twenty feet was at the northeast corner of Broadway and Twenty-second. And that one was to allow a non-residential height increase from twenty to twenty-six feet. That went through a rezoning for pad thirty-two, which was a proposed fries store that they needed that height. And that got effectuated in twenty seventeen. The requested amendment is, is twofold, one is to amend the non-residential policy two D to be specific that the height will be increased greater than twenty feet at the southeast corner. And then it references the new addition of a policy direction for non-residential policy two F, which is to allow non-residential buildings on the one acre parcel located at the southeast corner of Houghton Road and Broadway Boulevard intersection to have a maximum building height of thirty feet. I want to point out for the, to commission that last time at the study session, that height was proposed for thirty-five feet. But the applicant is since looking to fit into the parameters of thirty feet for the maximum building height. So the project detail here is shows in the aerial, again, the, the location right now, it is, it's vacant. At one time, it was a gas station for a convenience store. And then there was a car wash planned at that time that was never developed. Those structures were demolished in twenty sixteen. And you can see that even though it is a stand, a lone parcel, it is in, is connected and adjacent to that shopping center at that corner. The shop, I think the zone, everything's zone C1, the, the proposed rezoning would be C2 needed for, for the use. Again, the surrounding, you can see there, C1 pretty much all around the corner and really a very commercial area. Should be noted in the plan that the policy direction really noted that for non-residential uses, they were really, really only at the two corners of major intersections, Houghton and Broadway and Houghton and Twenty-second. I added these in from last time, there were some questions that were raised and it actually shows a little bit here. This is actually that the applicant is in their design compatibility report, looking to the west, we can see another commercial shopping center. But it also shows where that railing is, is a drainage area that was put in prior to two thousand and five regarding the Houghton Road widening and to, to get some of the drainage in there, that's actually in the scenic buffer area that's required with thirty feet. At the time that the gas station was built, there was landscaping there. And so that's a little bit problematic. And you can see again on the site, I pointed out a little bit, raise it in, I wanted to bring it up, but also too, the applicant worked prior to submitting, worked really ahead with the Planning Development Services landscape section and zoning as well as DTM or transportation because some of that is in the, in the right way. And they, there was a, a letter that the, through a review, a determination by the landscape section that that has been compromised prior to two thousand and five, those existing structures, so that they would not necessarily need to meet that landscaping along there, but would do, as the letter points out, to do, to meet the spirit or intent. So they would be looking at providing a landscape palette as well as a, um, some more trees and throughout the, the site. And here in their design compatibility report, they also talked about that a little bit, that, that landscaping will be incorporated between the basin and the car wash to the greatest extent, meeting that, that, that spirit of that. And that part of the existing border landscape will be improved, there'll be additional plant material to meet some of the code requirements. And that the, there'll be some other landscaping areas along the eastern and southern property line which will be able to supplement. So that was actually discussed and worked with the landscaping on supplementing more landscaping due to that drainage area. You can see here in the site plan a little more that the applicant had submitted, was going for the rezoning, the, um, more of the landscaping spread out throughout. And you can see also too, the vacuums are over on the west side, away more from, towards Houghton and then a bit situated. Here's some renderings that the applicant has provided. And again, they, they're here also to, to talk more about that. I just also included a little bit what happened, you know, some comments or questions from the planning commission. And there was some concern or, or comments regarding the ten-foot border. Again, I mentioned that letter from the landscape review section. Put a letter that those pride, site improvements were in existence prior to two thousand and five. That, that basin was in existence, that drainage spans the thirty-foot border, a lot of that. And then to ensure that the spirit of the code is met, the applicant is working with DTM and PDSD landscaping during the development package process and the rezoning. And, and then one of the things that was in the letter was all new on determination, was all new, trees on the site will be planted at a size no less than twenty-four inch box, so they would look to try to enhance that area. Also, there was a, a question about renderings or view sheds and there are some renderings provided. The height, as I mentioned, for the architectural embellishment before, that was a, I think of a concern, it was going to be in the northeast corner of the building. That height now is back down to thirty feet, which meets the UDC for setbacks and the, and the scenic corridor. And the new site plan reflected that. Land use design compatibility, the requested plan amendment will allow a height of thirty feet. All noise generating vacuum equipment to be placed on the Houghton facing side of the building. The site is thirty, three hundred, approximately three hundred and seventy-one feet from residential development to the east and three hundred and eighty-three feet away from residential development to the south. The car wash tunnel design features a varied riff line to differentiate between visual plain and provide some direct rainwater harvesting for the onsite collection basins. The Houghton East Neighborhood Plan has been amended twice, again, to allow for greater building heights and mainly on those, those corners of the major arterials. The proposed amendments consistent with Plan Tucson and the Houghton East Neighborhood Plan developed, again, consistent with other land uses at the intersection of the Broadway and Houghton intersection. And that Silverado Shopping Center is on the same corner, was developed in nineteen ninety-eight with one-story buildings that range approximately around thirty feet with some of the, the fascia. And then the proposal provides compatibility with and services for surrounding neighborhood. So staff recommends the planning commission for this item to mayor and council to approve an amendment to the Houghton East Neighborhood Plan, non-residential policy for two D to add and southeast corner and to reference the policy in two E and two F. And then to add additional language at policy two F to allow non-residential buildings on the one acre parcel located at the southwest corner of Houghton Road and Broadway Boulevard intersection to have a maximum building height of thirty feet. That ends staff's present, presentation, there is the applicant here to also present as well. And if there's any questions, staff can answer those now or later.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Beal. At this time, is there any commission staff's, questions for staff?
I have a question. You know, John and I had discussion about it and I understand the relief from the thirty-foot scenic corridor natural open space under that three point three point three, but you read that section for, it looks like that only applies to existing site improvements. So the car wash is a new improvement to the site. And it also says it, it doesn't apply to any land that's subject to the scenic corridor. So I'm having a hard time understanding why it doesn't have to comply with seven point six when it's new improvements on the site. And then if you go back to the picture from page thirty-three and you look at that buffer, there's not a stick of landscaping in the buffer. So, um, it, it appears that there's enough room on the site for them to get at least a five-foot minimum landscape border east of the basin. So that there can be trees, I think it's five trees that would require and, and the screening. So, um, that's my concern and just looking at the code, I don't understand the application here.
I, I understand that, that concern, Mr. Martin, Commissioner Martin, I, the, it's not like there's going to be any, not any landscaping along that area. I think the way the staff had written that determination was to try to provide some, again, some relief, but also as it went through the process, to figure out how much of a swath of that landscaping can be provided along there. And if there can get some trees, then that would probably be great, but I think they wanted to really. But I think they wanted to really work with the engineered DTM right away to see how much close they can get to that, and also with the applicant to figure out what that plant palette might look like as they go through that process. One of the things that was also talked about was to try to enhance some of that as along that corner of Broadway and Houghton, and then some other areas along the site, which I think is not required by code, but the they're trying to pull more for that site. So I think that is going through, that is something that the applicant was going to work through with through the rezoning and the development package, and can, some of those things can be worked out through that rezoning for your concerns too.
I did see on the revised development plan that there's something stuck in the two feet between the fence and the curb. But you've got over 180 feet of frontage, and that streetscape, unless there's trees along there, is not going to be pretty, so. It's, we just had an article about the heat island effect, there's no shade in that area. So the the design compatibility report says it's unfeasible to plant in the basin, so I'm just wondering where where the landscaping is going to go.
I'll let the applicants here to speak to that on that.
Are there any questions from the commission for staff? All right, hearing none, if the applicant would please provide their presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, good evening, Chair Ortiz-Penneyo and members of the commission. Thank you for allowing me to add some color to, thank you, to Mr. Beal's comments. I'll try not to be terribly repetitive after the study session last time, and this, I'll again, try to try to keep it succinct. My slides are a little wonky there. I think they're, I think it's a PDF. Okay, thank you. There we go. So as on previous times, we've been in front of you, we've had our whole team here, we've got some of the people in the back that are here in person for Mr. Carwash. We've got Avantia and James and Catherine with us. And then online, we have some of our other experts, I know Stephanie Thresh is here from CEC, our engineer, as well as our traffic and our noise experts. So if we do need to call on them, I'll just call them up as as we're going along. But this is, again, the southeast corner of Broadway and Houghton, and it is a pad that sits in front of the existing Safeway. And just wanted to point out two additional things on this as you're looking at this overview. It's, you know, four different commercial corners, and two of which are in the Houghton East, the two on the east side of of Houghton Road. We do sit over 300, about 380 feet from the Mr. Carwash site eastern boundary to the nearest residence. And I actually did that rezoning way back when that that residential development did go in, and it actually post-stated, the Safeway was there, that shopping center was there when that subdivision did go in. But it does have a five-foot masonry wall that separates it, as well as a 10-foot buffer before you get to the wall of the house as well. So they they have some nice buffering and screening from the parking lot and then the site as you go along. This is a historic photo of that from all the way back to 2013. Sounds weird calling it historic, I suppose, that this was the gas station that sat on the corner, and this is looking from Houghton toward the south. So you can, well, you can't see, it's it's actually that building kind of screens the Safeway Center, you can just kind of catch a glimpse of of the Safeway Building behind it. And you can see Houghton Road is to the right of this of this photo. A little closer picture of the site, there are, it it has been obviously fully disturbed as it was developed, and then the gas station was, as as Mr. Beal pointed out, was demolished back in 2016. But there are some remaining elements of things on the site from that. The northeast corner, there's a drainage basin that we will repurpose and reuse in the new site plan from the gas station. And then there's a, just offsite, there's a huge drainage culvert that takes the flow across that corner there. And the site does sit about two to four feet lower than even the shopping center parking lot. And then the the Bario Rincon sits just a little bit higher, so it kind of does stair step down as you get to go toward the west, toward Houghton and and toward Broadway. And then on the west, you see the multi-use path that runs along Houghton that was part of the Houghton Road improvements a few years back, and that drainage basin that was put in as to to handle some of the drainage that comes off of Houghton. And I'll I'll discuss, you know, this has been a big topic, and from day one, when we started looking at this, how we're going to address this natural buffer. And we'll, I'll go ahead and address that when we get to the site plan in a little more detail. This is a look at the site from Houghton Road, looking toward the east, and you can see, oh, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. This is that same view, looking from Broadway to the south, that you can see the gas station has been demolished in there, you can see the Safeway at the rear of the site. You can see too, along Houghton Road, you can see those teal or aqua-colored turquoise-colored fences where that new drainage basin or new-ish drainage basin that was put in with the road improvement sits. And there is some, there's a nice mature tree up at the corner, there's some vegetation that we're looking to preserve where we can on those edges. So as as Mr. Beal very clearly pointed out before, I won't, won't go into a whole lot of detail on this, but Houghton East Neighborhood Plan does have two opportunities for commercial in it, and one is this corner of Broadway and Houghton, and the other is the corner at 22nd and Houghton. And both of those commercial areas are every commercial, non-residential development in this area is limited to that 20 feet. And if you'll remember back to that aerial that I had up first, those corners are at Broadway and Houghton have both developed out with buildings that are actually exceeding that 20 feet. The Safeway is about a 30-foot tall building, and the Dollar Tree that's on the northeast corner across the street from the site is also exceeding that 20 feet. And then down, when you get down to 22nd and Houghton, there's the Planned Fries Shopping Center that did, was the subject of a plan amendment that also requested that exceed that extra 26 feet. So 20 feet is just a very difficult restriction for commercial uses, and it was shown that as we've gone through the life of this Houghton East Plan, other than that one element and one implementation technique, we do meet all of the other criteria that are in the plan. So it's really just that 20 feet. So again, the way that we're proposing is that we treat this and that we would request that the the amendment be worded is the existing implementation 20, or 2D would add the words "and southeast" to be able to accommodate this request for the southeast corner. And then we would add 2F, which is the new policy that addresses more specifically, and again, this is, even though most of the area has either been amended or developed out at more than the 20 feet, this particular request does focus just on this one acre parcel, just at the corner, just the subject of tonight's. So the wording to allow non-residential buildings on the one acre parcel located on the southeast corner of Houghton and Broadway intersection to have a maximum building height of 30 feet. And we did, when we were here last month, we were planning to request an additional 35 feet, which would require, required us to follow up with a variance. We've looked at the architectural plans and the models that Mr. Carwash has and have determined that we can do that without that and still have an attraction, architecturally attractive building and still meet that 30 feet. So we've removed that request from this presentation and from this request tonight. So again, here is the preliminary development plan, and I can talk a little more about some of the challenges that we had when we were designing the site. And those are primarily based on the fact that that basin is existing and that it was built in a manner that doesn't really lend itself to be able to be, come back. And, you know, a lot of times, a lot of times when we are facing properties that are on scenic corridors, they've been disturbed, for whatever reason, from development, from previous activity, from just roadway activity. And this is a little different, in that there's actually a built structure in there that was built as part of the road improvements. And it did, over the years, if you look back at at aerials since it was built, there's been times where there have been trees in there, and then they've come in and cleaned that out because it's, you know, important to keep, as you know, Commissioner Martin, to keep it so it perks, keep it so it's clear, and keep it so it drains. So right now, there is not a lot of vegetation in that. We are looking at ways, and as Mr. Beal pointed out, we started that conversation with DTM and with the landscape staff of PDSD to explore if there are, if there is an ability to put any trees or shrubs maybe around the perimeter of that, not necessarily that would impede any drainage flow at the bottom or or impede percolation. But we're very constrained as far as where we can, we can do that, obviously. And then where the building sits, and if I can explain this a little bit, there's really one opportunity to put the building on the site where the existing driveways are. And let me back up a little bit. When the site was a gas station, there were actually three driveways on it. Through the Houghton widening, they closed the northwest driveway, and we have two driveways that access it. So we have the one that's the existing one that comes into the Safeway parking lot at the southeast or southwest corner of the site, and then we have the one along Broadway. And as I pointed out, when we were looking at the aerial earlier, we also have a drainage basin that's existing that we're going to repurpose and reuse that's already on the northeast corner of the site. So we were threading the building in and placing the building as close as we can to the eastern part of the site and still have full access in there and have safe circulation so that you can come in off of Broadway, come down, come into the pay station where you pay to come back through and and get your car washed. And then on the west side, we've put, that's where the most outdoor activity occurs, and we've put those bays where there's vacuum bays and parking for the customers to be able to to proper clean their cars and vacuum them away from the residential as far as possible, so on the west side of that. And and so that's, that's the, really the only place that the building would fit. And then that also, the those parking bays in there allow us to get that three-to-one building setback that's required for the scenic corridor. So that does leave us with a narrow strip that we have between the top of the the drainage basin and where we will start the the parking lot. That area is currently all disturbed now, it's not a natural area at all. And so, so yeah, long story short, we do want to continue to work with the city to see if there's opportunities to to get some vegetation there. We do have a little bit of area in there, but we also are required to have an opaque screen. And so we're proposing to do one of three different options is what we've we've been exploring as far as in that area. And let me, well, I'll go to the renderings in a bit, but the current fence or the current railing that's around that drainage basin is is not opaque, it's just some some rails in a decorative manner. So what we're proposing to do behind that is one of three things, we could come back in and put an opaque screen of vegetation, hedge, something like that, that would meet that 30 foot. We could do, affix some panels onto the back of that rail and make it opaque there and have a decorative screen that way. Or we could simply work with DTM and just take that down and replace that rail on the back to provide that screening of the parking lot. Real quick to show you all the renderings that we did develop for this, so you can kind of see what, how this would lay out on the site. This is the new proposed building at the 30-foot maximum. This is looking at it from Broadway toward the south. And you can see with the red arrows, that shows you how that sits in relation to the Safeway Building toward the back. And you can see that the bright turquoise on the right is that drainage basin, and then we start our our parking lot, and then the building does sit back the the three-to-one setback, the 90 feet. There is some vegetation along the corner, again, on Broadway and Houghton, and then, go to the next rendering. This is showing it looking from the southwest corner toward the northeast, and you can see how that basin does sit in there and sits in front of the building. It's certainly Mr. Carwash's preference to to do do a treatment here that is attractive, that makes it look and presents it in the best light. I feel, you know, I know you've seen a lot of their their developments around town, they have a lot of pride in the way that those look from the street, and they do want to work within the constraints of the site to be able to do that. And again, this is looking from the Safeway Center, kind of looking toward the north of the of the site a little closer. And that's an aerial of that, so you can see again how it sets in, excuse me, in relation to the Safeway Parking Lot and and Houghton Road. And then the only other thing that I did want to reach out, or to reiterate from the last time is our public outreach. We did have only one neighbor that came out to our our meeting. She did not express any concern, she is that neighbor that is the closest on the other side of the parking lot. And she had asked, her only question was, why aren't there more people? And we explained to her, the notice area is 400 feet. And so I think it was her and her neighbor were the only two residences within that 400 foot radius. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions you may have, losing my voice here.
All right, thank you, Ms. Morales, for your presentation. Does the commission have any questions? Commissioner Martin?
I do. Just looking at your site plan, it looks like you could slide the building southeast five feet and get the five-foot buffer.
On, slide the building to the west, you're saying?
Southeast five feet.
To the southeast.
Same axis at the top, it's just, there's 16 feet on the east, it doesn't need to be there. So.
You know.
So go back to your last picture of the aerial of the site.
Yeah.
Commissioner Martin, I'd like to remind you that we are a body to review the area plan amendment, we are not the Design Review Board, we are not Site Development Review. That is kind of outside of our purview to be discussing a lot of these issues.
So we're being asked to have a 100-foot building that's 30 feet tall next to a scenic corridor with no screening, no trees. Go to the aerial photo that you just had.
The aerial, that one?
There's nothing there, there's no buffer. I mean, they called it the 30-foot buffer, the corridor along Houghton. There's nothing there. So I'm not going to vote for approval unless there's some method to get a landscape border with trees that meets, somewhat meets the landscape standards. It's just not right for the neighborhood to have a 180-foot-long street scape with no vegetation.
Commissioner Martin, Chair Ortiz-Penneyo, Commissioner Martin, we respect your opinion on that. What we are here tonight to ask for is the 30-foot height rather than the 20 feet. That is really all, we are going through a rezoning process concurrently, that's why we have this level of detail that we wouldn't typically have if we were doing a standalone plan amendment. That is something that I know that the zoning examiner will be looking at as far as his, and then as far as as his purview, and then as far as PDSD. and then as far as, as his purview and then as far as PDSD staff. We've been working with them. We're trying to work with them. We want to do something that looks nice and we, we pledged that we would do that. But again, what we would ask the planning commission to approve tonight is that additional height.
I see a couple of hands up. I'm not sure the order in which they came up. I see Anna Cassidy, so I'll just go with her.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I can understand Commissioner Martin's concern with the, the limited landscaping that's available along Houghton because we are being asked for a 10 foot height increase. So with that, I
Commissioner Cassidy, I believe we've lost your audio.
If she comes back in, we can
Okay, well.
Allow her to so continue her comments.
Let's see if we can mute her real quickly.
In the meantime, was there someone else up prior to Commissioner Lampo? I can't tell. Or was Commissioner Lampo the second person?
I believe Commissioner Lampo's second.
Okay. You're up, Mr. Lampo.
Okay, you be entered. Thanks. So just two really quick questions. And this, you know, it was just totally out there. But I was just wondering, so this used to be a gas station. Have the underground storage tanks, I'm guessing those have been removed and has the site been remediated?
Chair Ortiz-Pino, Commissioner Lampo, yes.
Okay, the other, it's, I guess more of a comment, but question for staff. Has the city adopted the ICC's green construction code?
Commissioner Lampo, no, we have not. It is not a required code.
So, you know, looking through this application, I just, I noticed that there's a mention that there's an attempt to reduce the urban heat island effect. I see that a lot of the roof is black. The only use in the city that requires a lowered albedo during construction is actually ADUs, which just seems, I just noticed that it seems very strange to me that that's the only use that we're looking at albedos. I would imagine that larger retail, commercial construction should take those things into account as well, but just wanted to see if, if that was an adopted code. But that's it for me. Thanks.
All right, does Commissioner Cassidy back?
Is it working now?
You are up.
Okay, great. I don't know where I got cut off. But my question is whether or not a couple of the parking spaces could be turned into landscape islands for parking lot trees. And I don't know if you heard my justification for that, but the applicant's asking for an additional 10 feet of height. So I think it is reasonable and within our purview to look towards softening of the impacts of that additional height.
Chair Ortiz-Pino, Commissioner Cassidy, I'm, I know that these are, these, these spaces that are along, along the basin that are immediately to the east of the basin. Those are extra wide and they're, they're designed to accommodate the vacuums. And those vacuums are a continuous system. So as far as breaking those up to, to interrupt those with an island, functionally, I'm looking at James Throckmorton here who's going to hopefully help me with that.
Hello, thank you. Yeah, James Throckmorton with Mr. Carwash. So to, to answer the question about shifting the building kind of to the southeast, the, the problem with that, and it, it doesn't show up on this, but if you looked at the, just the site plan, we have a, a radius to get around, to get cars to turn, you know, going south and making that U-turn back into the, the tunnel entry. We have minimums, standard minimums that we want to adhere to because if you drop below those thresholds, a lot of cars can't make that turn and get straight back on to the conveyor. And then it's a multi-point turn for them to enter the, enter into the car wash, onto the conveyor. So we're right at our minimums there to fit that in. To, to answer your question about the islands, we could put some islands potentially at the end. And we'd be happy, happy to do that. We like landscaping. We like it to look, look nice. The site just has some constraints that it's hard to work around. And what she was saying about the, where the producer that creates the, the vacuum suction for the, the vacuums in the, in the stalls, that is a continuous loop. And so if we put a island in the middle, that would require us to have to put in another whole vacuum system, which would take out another island. So having that along the, the the, the basin there, you'll see one producer and that runs all the vacuums there. And if we put an island in the middle, that would break that up and, and cause problems. So we could, we could do it at the end of one of the islands and put some trees in there and some vegetation to soften it, but it wouldn't be in the middle.
Does the commission have any other questions? I see Commissioner Cassidy's hand still up.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to check with Commissioner Martin and see would that address some of his concerns if they put in a tree on either end of that westernmost strip of parking spaces?
No, because it'd still be about 140 feet of no trees.
I do have a question for staff and maybe the applicants and, and kind of how this site is developed. Obviously, the retention basin, the, the drainage feature that was created was created by, I'm assuming, the Regional Flood Control District. Did they have any review process in the scenic corridor and what they were doing and how they would be impacting that parcel's development later on? Because it seems like we're kind of taking, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So Commissioner, my understanding is that the, again, with the roadway, putting that drainage was done of those improvements be prior to 2005. And that the, at the time, there was a scenic buffer. And then so that the, one, and then a point for the letter that the landscaping section wrote was to take into that consideration that that went in for that site, making it very hard to, to, as they had pointed out, to, to do something on the site now the way it's situated. So that's why they wrote it. But the letter was also, as the applicant's had mentioned, continued to do the spirit of the, of that, to figure out how that palette might work. And then figure to give them, the applicant, time to go through the rezoning and development process. Again, figure out how to work up that railing to try to get something in between. Just figure, trying to figure things out how to work for the site. But that was, that roadway was done prior and it really has been problematic, which is how they reviewed that.
Yeah, and that kind of gets to my point. Another question regarding area plans, neighborhood plans with, specifically neighborhood plans with dimensional standards. You know, the dimensional standard is 20 feet, which is more restrictive than the underlying zoning. What has supremacy, the zoning code or a neighborhood plan?
So zoning code would have a precedence unless you were seeking to rezone. And then you would have to meet that 20 feet with your proposal. So that's, that's what ended up happening here. While they had 30 feet, I think, with C1, when they had to jump up to C2 for the car wash.
Caviar on the car wash.
There was the restriction on the 20 feet in building height within the plan that they had to meet in order to be conform, in conformance for the rezoning.
Understood. Commissioner Martin?
So looking at the plan, if this was, if the site hadn't been developed and this was just a normal site, the first 30 feet onto the site would have to be natural native buffer. Right now, they only have 20 feet because the city's giving them relief with 10 feet in the right of way. So they gained 10 feet with that relief. So I'm asking for five feet back so that it can be a decent streetscape on that property. So they're, they're benefiting from the relief of only five feet. I mean, I disagree with the city's position that 7.6 still applies to the site. So there's a five foot benefit to my request.
All right, well, there's no other questions from the commission. I'd like to open this up for a public hearing to members of the public who would like to speak about the site. In general, there is a two to five, three to five minute, depending on the number of speakers, time limit per speaker, which may be extended at my discretion. Members of the commission may ask questions of the speakers, but we do ask that each speaker be timely as we want to make sure that those who would like to be heard have an opportunity. We have had enough people who have requested to speak ahead of time. If anyone would like to speak related to Houghton East Neighborhood Plan Amendment, you may do so at this time. Okay, hearing none. I can make a motion, hear a motion for closing the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Second.
We had a hand. Is that a commissioner?
I did raise a hand. Is it all right to speak?
Yes. We didn't close the public hearing. I apologize.
Thank you. My name is Regina Pugh. I live in the Bario Rincon neighborhood in the section off of Broadway behind where the proposed site is. And I'm, I am very appreciative that the request, the height extension request is already dropped from the original 35 feet. I'm not particularly savvy about understanding zoning requirements, but from what I understand, the current limit there is 20 feet. And Mr. Carwash is asking for an additional 10 feet of height that seems to be purely for what they consider to be aesthetic needs of the building and is not required for the actual functioning of the workings of the car wash. So I just wanted to express some concern about setting a precedent for commercial height creep getting gradually higher and higher in our neighborhood. I, because I don't really fully understand what the additional height is, is really going to be useful for, other than maybe just the design of the building. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I believe the applicant has an, an answer for you.
Thanks, Chair Ortiz-Pino. Yes, thank you for your, your question. And let me clarify a bit. So when we were in last month with the study session, we were coming in with the proposal to go up to 35 feet. That additional five feet was for architectural embellishments. The 30 feet is actually a functional need. And the 30 feet is, is, like I said, a pretty typical height. It's, it's, I would say, most of the other commercial buildings in that, around that intersection are coming in at that 30 feet or perhaps a little bit higher with their architectural embellishments. But again, the C1 zone, zoning already allows the 30 feet. It's just this area plan amendment or area plan policy that was put into place when the Houghton East Neighborhood Plan was developed several years ago that restricts it further in the event of a rezoning. So hopefully it helped clarify. We're, it's not nearly for architectural, it's for functional at the 30 feet. Thank you.
Thank you. That, that was not completely clear. I appreciate your clarification.
Okay, I want to give a little bit of extra time so I don't cut anybody off again. I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any nays? Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. I would like to open this up for general discussion by the commission and for the proposed plan update. Looks like we had a robust discussion prior to the public hearing. With the completion of that discussion, I'm going to open this up for a motion to vote on recommendation of the Houghton East Neighborhood Plan Amendment to Mayor and Council. Can I have a motion to recommend this to Mayor and Council?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the revision to the 30 feet heights, subject to the provision of a minimum five foot wide called a street landscape. February 19th, 2024, from the city of Tucson.
Is there a second for that motion?
If I could, I only could make out about two. Could, could Commissioner Martin repeat that into the microphone, please?
Sorry.
Recommend approval of the height increase to 30 feet per the applicant's request, subject to the provision of a minimum five foot wide street landscape border with all the vegetation screening requirements of section seven, six, four, point four and five. East of the landscape, I mean, sorry, east of the basin with the trees to be 24 inch box trees per the city memorandum dated February 19th, 2024. That's the memorandum staff's been referencing.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second. The commission can now discuss that motion. Is there any questions? I guess I have a question. Is five feet sufficient for, for what you're requesting in the landscape?
Ask the expert on staff.
Per, per code, the 24 inches and like the vegetation that would be required, are we talking X amount of trees and shrubs? And so those trees at 24 inch boxes, is five feet sufficient for that?
I believe they're 33 feet on center. So that's just getting the screening material. I don't know. I thought Matthew might be able to answer that question, so.
Yeah, so I, Chair or Vice Chair Ortiz-Pino, Commissioner Martin, yeah, I don't, I don't believe we can actually answer that question at this point. It's, it's really, it's really, it's, it's really going to come out during the rezoning portion with conditions related to that and then also during the development package review and things of that sort.
So I think that five feet is adequate space to provide screening and trees. So there's some screening along the way, so.
Commissioner Martin, and I don't, I'm not answering as far as the landscape, but I do know the letter that the landscape section wrote, they, they referenced the 24 inch box trees to other parts of the site, but still looked at having land, you know, talked about landscaping along, how that would look along that Houghton Road area. So that as, as you mentioned for the landscaping, but the trees, they had mentioned that would be other parts because they felt that would, through the letter would be more appropriate. But I'm not saying they weren't trying to do trees along, but I'm just saying that that letter looked at that through their review.
Is there any further discussion from the commission on the motion that we have a second for? If not, I'd like to hold a, I guess a roll call vote for this one, to be fair. Thank you.
Commissioner Cassidy?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ortiz-Pino?
Aye.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Aye.
Commissioner McCancy?
Aye.
And Commissioner Lampo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Here's the ayes have it. Looks like this is recommended to Mayor and Council. Motion passes, favorable recommendation. At this time, I would like the, hand the meeting back over to Chair Wellitt, who's coming in the door. Getting through security. We'll do a quick recess for water as while the chairwoman comes up.
All right, so it looks like we are all here. Is everybody online from the commission? It looks like I have everyone. Really quick recess, thank you Vice Chair Ortiz-Epinho for doing that, that item. So let's move on to item number four on the agenda, which I believe is some presentations from staff related to the state legislation and municipal zoning updates here. So would staff please give their presentation related to item number five?
Yes, thank you Chair Wellitt and Commission, appreciate it. So wanted to provide a brief presentation on some of the, we've mentioned this at our last meeting, about some of the kind of state legislation that's gone through recently related to housing and municipal zoning and how that really affects us as a municipality and some of our zoning codes. So there were four bills that were passed in this last legislative session that really are related to zoning and housing. First one of that is House Bill 2720. This is related to accessory dwelling units, creating requirements for municipalities in the city, or in the state. There was House Bill 2297, which is related to adaptive reuse for multifamily development. The third one was Senate Bill 1162. This one is related to timelines for zoning applications. And then the fourth one is related to, has from House Bill 2721. And that's related to middle housing and requirements for certain municipalities of size, certain size, related to middle housing. So, oops. Oh Christina, do you mind putting it on full screen? Boom, cool. So this one, the housing bill, first one is Housing Bill 2720. This one is related to accessory dwelling units. So this one applies to municipalities with a population of more than 75,000. And it requires us to basically conform, well, adopt accessory dwelling units, allow for them and then adopt certain regulations to meet for, by January 1st, 2025. So just as I think a lot of you are aware, but I don't know if everyone was actually on the planning commission at that time, but Mayor and Council did amend our local codes to allow ATUs in December 2021. But those regulations don't totally line up with what is being required by the state. There was a full, robust process to make those changes. It's been pretty successful, we've also done a design competition related to accessory dwelling units. We have a model plan library now to help to kind of promote the development of these within our community. But this will require us to go through and make some additional changes. There are some kind of, some kind of differences within the state and what we have. First one's related to size. The way you calc, way we calculate size is 10% of the lot size or 650 square feet. That's like kind of the bottom amount. So every lot is allowed for 650 square foot ADU. This would allow, this would require a size requirement of 75% of the principal structure. In most cases, it's probably more than what we currently allow. But it is different, so we would look to potentially make sure that we're aligning with that size requirement. It would allow for two ADUs, and then in some cases, three. So those two ADUs would be one attached unit, one detached unit, and then if you have a large enough lot, which is like an acre, and you could have a third unit, but it would have to be restricted. Basically, it would have to be an affordable housing. It would have to be restricted for affordable housing. There is a difference in how the requirements related to building height. So in our code, it got a little convoluted, but we basically, it's restricted to 12 feet or if you have a, have a principal structure that is two stories, it can go up to the height of the principal structure. This basically says that you're allowed to go up to the height of whatever a primary principal structure would be allowed to. So if you're in an R1 or an R2 zone, you'd be able to go up to 25 feet. It has a difference in setbacks. So currently, what we do require is what is required by the zone. A lot of times, it's like two-thirds the building height or six feet. This would basically say there's, that it's five-foot setback and that's what you have to require for it. It doesn't allow for any parking requirements. Right now, we have waivers for parking, so we do require one by, space per spot. This would require us to make that change. And then, but there are some other provisions in there, it does allow for historic review. There might be some restrictions on account of how that works. And then it doesn't, as we say here, supersede any or prohibit restrictive covenants for those. So if you have CCNRs that restrict ADUs or that type of thing, you'd still have to adhere to those within your HOA or something of that sort. So if a municipality fails to adopt these development regulations by January 1st, 2025, it pretty much says, ADUs will be allowed on all lots zoned for residential use in the municipality without limits. So like I said, you know, we, we were kind of ahead of the ball, I think, for state. We're one of the first to kind of go through and make changes related to accessory dwelling units. But with this new state law, we will be going back and making some revisions to our zoning code to come into compliance with, with that. So that's the first one. Actually, this was what I just went through right here, the differences between. So differences in number of ADUs allowed, size, height, parking, as well as setbacks. Second bill is related to adaptive reuse for multifamily development. So this requires municipalities of population more than 150,000 to adopt regulations to allow multifamily residential or adaptive reuse on at least 10% of existing commercial office or mixed-use buildings without requiring special exception, rezoning, application, or any other discretionary process. And this is another one that has to be made changes by January 1st, 2025. With this one, so major changes really aren't anticipated with this. The main thing with this was basically saying that you can do residential and multifamily residential in commercial zones. We already allow for commercial in our, or residential and multifamily within our commercial zones. So we actually went through and we've done some initial analysis of this as well. One of the provisions in here that, that allows for a multifamily building to be five stories tall or must be, be allowed for, for five, on 10%. We did an initial analysis and we are either really close to that or at that. So we're going to do some further analysis, but I have a feeling, we're pretty sure that we're in compliance with this already. But if not, there may be some minor changes that we might make in order to come into compliance with this.
And really quick, I'm sorry, can you just repeat the part, you said five stories, then it kind of cut out and you said 10%? Could you just repeat that one?
Yeah, of course, Commissioner Lambo. So what it requires is that you have to allow for multifamily development or adaptive reuse of at least 10% of your commercial office or mixed-use buildings. So, and in there, there's a provision that, that when you allow for that, you have to allow for five, development of five stories or greater. So we went through and did an analysis of what zones we currently have, commercial zones, that allow for five stories or more. In doing so, we're right around 10%. And that's, that was some initial analysis that we've done related to that. So we're, like I said, you know, we, we already allow for multifamily in our commercial zones and some of our commercial zones already allow for greater than five stories. So we believe if we're not in compliance, we're very close.
Thanks.
Okay, third one, Senate Bill 1162. This is related to timelines for zoning applications. This one requires municipalities of 30,000 or more to adopt regulations, actually, yeah, by January 1st, 2025. And to set deadlines for the review and approval of zoning applications. So basically what it says is administrative review of applications must be complete within 30 days perceiving the application, and the municipality shall approve or deny an application within 180 days after determining the application is complete. So with this, currently for rezoning cases, the UDC already requires that a zoning examiner public hearing must be held within 70 days of an application. So middle, so, and 180 days for a concurrent plan amendment rezoning application. It doesn't have a deadline for when Mayor and Council must approve or deny an application, but we routinely have those that are approved within 180 days. This would require us to go through and make a minor change to our Unified Development Code to come into compliance with this. And then the last one is the, is House Bill 2721. This one's related to middle housing. This one is, the implications of this are actually a bit more complex than the other three bills. And you'll actually see because, related to this, it gives us more time to actually work through this one because of that. So this one requires municipalities with population of more than 75,000 to adopt regulations to allow middle housing, that's, you know, single-story, single-family homes, but then duplexes, triplexes, quads, so it's up to four units within a mile of the Central Business District on at least 20% of any new development or more than 10, of more than 10 contiguous acres by January 1st, 2026. Middle housing in this bill is defined as, as I said, duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, or detached residential development consisting of two to four units. And then with this one, if you don't adopt regulations required by this bill by January 1st, 2026, middle housing shall be allowed on lots in the municipality for single-family residential use without any limitations. So a bit of a motivation to go through and, and, you know, adopt those regulations by January 1st, 2026. So related to this, so we're currently going through and doing analysis on kind of how this works. They say a mile from the Central Business District. We have boundaries that are existing as Central Business District. We have both our CBD, we have our Influent Senate District that could kind of be related to that. But we're also working with other, you know, other municipalities. So we have a study group that we're doing with the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, really understanding the intent of this and what are those requirements. As we do that analysis, we're kind of moving forward and kind of working through this. This one will be more, more detailed and it will definitely take a, a lot more kind of work as far as understanding how to come into compliance with it and how to kind of craft regulations that really not only meet the letter of this, but also is something that actually benefits Tucson and becomes, you know, something that, that really kind of grows us and helps with housing and meets the intent of these bills that the state has put together. So kind of with that, I think, kind of, we did bring this to Mayor and Council back on June 18th. And they basically said, you know, those first three, you know, move forward with making changes related to those. So look at accessory dwelling units, the rezoning timelines and the adaptive reuse, and start, start off the public process as soon as you can and bring them back by the end of the year. And then the other one related to middle housing. So again, we're, we're working on doing kind of some analysis and we'll be back in front of Mayor and Council to give them kind of a better idea of what we've learned in the next month or two. That one, again, is a longer timeline. We really anticipate kind of, you know, spending a good portion of probably 2025 working on that and crafting regulations related to middle housing and addressing that. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. The, just as far as, you know, related to you, the accessory dwelling units will be, will be coming to you before the end of the year as well as, we're not sure about the rezoning timelines that may end up actually being a part of another package that we're working on. But definitely things to put on your radar for the commission as we move forward.
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Bersig. It looks like Chuck, you have a question?
So the last one you described, it says it affects all lots, you know, within a mile of the central CB, CDB. But the second one is at least 20% of any new development of more than 10 contiguous acres. Is that anywhere in the city or is that?
Yeah, that's, that's anywhere in the city.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I, I have a question. So Senate Bill 1162, so 180 days for approval or denial. What happens after 180 days? I know other states have enacted similar legislation and depending on the use, it can vary wildly. In New York, for utilities after the shot clock, I don't know if it's 180 days there, but after the shot clock expires, it's automatic approval. So I was just wondering if you could give some insight there.
Yeah, I, I, we haven't actually looked at it in a little while, so I'm not entirely sure. We're taking a look real quickly, we'll, we'll let you know.
Okay. I guess while you're checking, that, you know, there's another interesting piece to that Senate bill is that now it's mandatory that municipalities complete a housing assessment study every five years, I think it was?
Yes, Commissioner Lambo, yeah, we're, we are also working with Housing and Community Development. We'll be doing, yes, the, the five-year assessment and the requirements related to that as well.
Very nice.
Okay, yeah, interesting, yes. Commissioner Lambo, we looked, we will be working with the league on how, on that. It doesn't actually say what would happen if you don't meet the 180 days.
That's, that's kind of an important thing. Quick, another, I guess a quick question related to that too is, are there model local laws? Does, does the league of cities and towns, do they release model local laws that are in compliance with these House bills and these, the Senate bill? Again, I know other states that have similar leagues and part of their purview is to produce essentially very easily adopted model laws that sort of make the transition a little bit easier. Do they, do they produce anything along those lines?
So Commissioner Lambo, yeah, like in the past, they have done that before. An example of that was related to when the first marijuana laws came through for medical. They had a model, a model ordinance that municipalities could take, tweak to kind of their own, you know, what works for their community and then pass for that.
Very interesting, I'd be interested to see, I mean, this is a, you know, a litany of new zoning bills coming at us. So be interested to see if they produce any model local laws.
Are there any additional questions for staff by the commission? Hearing none and seeing no one move their hands. With the completion of the discussion, I'm going to ask for a motion to vote for this to set it to public hearing on August 14th. to set it to public hearing on August 14th, 2024. May I have a motion?
Like, see, that is actually an incorrect component. We're not setting it to public hearing at this point in time.
Okay.
Now, this is just informational.
Information, okay, so it's not a study session. I was wondering about that, so, very good. So I guess that, is that all from from staff, the commission, no more questions related to that item? Then we will go ahead and move to uh item number six, six, which is announcements by staff. No announcements this month. Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Um, that's, brings us to item number seven, which is future agenda items.
Um, yeah, just related to future agenda items, kind of what we discussed here. Um, we do anticipate, I think we're thinking about bringing a study session item on accessory dwelling units um in August um to the commission uh once we do a little public outreach prior to doing that.
Very good, thank you. And next on the list is call to the audience. Um, at this time, I'd like to offer to the public an opportunity to speak on any uh item that is not listed on uh the agenda as a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak, would you raise your hand or speak out loudly or jump at us from the back of the room here that's empty? Seeing no hands go up, uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Everybody at once, one, two, three, so move. All right, thank you all very much this evening. Have a good night.
Thanks. Thank you.